Good evening, welcome to the September 30th, 2020 Town of Islay Planning Board Meeting. I just want to go over a few housekeeping items before we get the meeting started this evening. One, we are still obviously under COVID restrictions in the state of New York and are conducting our meetings via the Zoom application. If you're just joining us and you have not signed up to speak for a specific public hearing and you would like to speak at that public hearing, please hit the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen now and let us know that you'd like to speak and what application number, public hearing you'd like to speak on. For applicants that are here, we're giving, give you 30 minutes to introduce your proposals. Prior to the public comments, for those of you that'll be joining us and speaking for a public comment, we ask you to limit your remarks to three minutes so we can give everybody an opportunity to be heard and allow for time for the planning board to ask questions. In terms of housekeeping, if you're joining us for item number two on the agenda, AMI, I'm not going to, I'm going to blow that name, Rashid Zada Realty Inc., that application will not be heard this evening. And if you're here for the public hearing on item number six, NCSG 123 LLC, that item has also been adjourned and will not be heard this evening. If the item says "public hearing" next to it, you'll be asked if you'd like to speak on those items. The first item on our agenda, actually, before I go into that, I just want to go down roll call and see who we have here this evening. I'm going to go in the order. I see people on the screen. Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bruno?
Here.
Mr. Fugliari?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
And whom, whom am I not seeing on my screen? Mr. Matamore, where are you?
Here.
Thank you. And I know that our last board member said he would not be able to join us this evening. So thank you. We're ready to go forward. Item one on the agenda, site plan modification decision item, Jack Shapiro, SP 2018-050, north side of East Suffolk Avenue, number zero, number 60, and number 64, and west side of Pineville Road, Central Islay. Actor requests the buffer relaxation in connection with the construction of a new multi-tenant retail building. Good evening, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Go right ahead.
All right. Good evening to the board. My name is Joseph Clemens. A partner within the firm, German and Clemens Architecture PC, located at 3275 Veterans Memorial Highway, Suite B11, Ronconcomer, New York, 11779. I'm speaking to you this evening in regards to the properties for 60 and 64 Suffolk Avenue, property tax map numbers 0500, 9901, 0910, and 11 in Central Islay. The combined parcels are approximately 0.42 acres and is located on northwest corner of Suffolk Avenue and Pineville Road. As indicated, this application requests a buffer relaxation in connection with the request for the construction of a new multi-tenant retail building. We had last made a presentation to the planning board back on May 6th of 2020 to explain the intent of the proposed application. In short, the site which is own business one currently consists of two single-family dwellings, one of, one of which was built circa 1927 and the other 1922. The third parcel, which is presently vacant, originally had a single-family dwelling, however, was demolished in 1969. These items are recognized by the Town of Islay per their current certificate of occupancies. The request, which is presented before you this evening, proposes to demolish the existing remaining residences and propose a multi-tenant retail building, which is considered as of right use within the Business One District. Due to the unique trapezoidal shape of the property and after numerous design attempts, it was determined that the layout presented was efficient for the property and proposed use, while still complying with the zoning criteria and subdivision land development regulations. If you were, if, if you review the site plan provided in more detail, you will see that the design complies with the current zoning standards. The height of the proposed building is 20 feet, well under the allowable 35 feet. The building would theoretically be a floor area ratio of 40% of the lot or approximately 7,200 square feet, while our proposal requests a total building area of only 2,996 square feet or 16.6% respectively. It had been requested by the Town of Islay Engineering Department that we dedicate eight feet of the road to, of our property to, to the town for Pineville Road widening. With doing so, our proposed plan still accommodates the 10-foot wide front yard setback requirement from both Pineville Road and Suffolk Avenue. It should also be noted that while considering the buffer, which includes a six-foot high buffer fence, a double hedgerow of evergreen arborvitae and red maple trees placed every 20 feet on center, our proposed plan still satisfies the front and total yard landscaping requirements of 18.2% and 21.9% respectively. The reason, however, for which we are here discussing this proposal once again this evening is due to our request for the buffer relaxation from the property to the north or for Pineville Road. This property is a split-zone parcel of Business One and Residence B, however, is currently used by the Central Islay Hop-Hog Volunteer Ambulance Corpse, an ambulance dispatch center which is recognized as a commercial use. Following the public hearing portion, it had been requested by planning staff to schedule a meeting with the Central Islay Hop-Hog Volunteer Ambulance Corp in order to gather feedback and address any potential concerns brought forth. As such, our office had sent certified letters with return receipts to the Central Islay Hop-Hog Volunteer Ambulance Corp requesting to meet and discuss the proposed application. Our office has provided the Town of Islay staff with copies of the certified mail receipts and return receipts as evidence of our efforts to contact the neighbor in good faith to address any potential concerns which they may have had. Coincidentally, our, our office had received a call earlier this afternoon from Mr. Paul Ryan of the Volunteer Ambulance Corp. We had discussed the project and clarified some areas of his concern. Following our discussion, he appeared to be supportive of our application and had, and the proposed improvements. The Town of Islay Engineering Division has also stated that their Traffic Safety Division, as well as their traffic consultants, had determined this proposal would not pose an adverse impact from a traffic and safety standpoint, including from an ambulance standpoint. I would like to note that within the site plan modification conditions, there are recommendations from Traffic Safety with which my client has no objection. As indicated, my client had been provided with draft site modifications per the Town of Islay's Planning Department for Review. The client is in agreement with the conditions set forth and as such has promptly executed them for submission to the Planning Department for their records. As you can see from the plan set before you, my client is simply requesting to improve his property. These improvements requested will provide an as-of-right use, which will become a benefit to the community and enhance the aesthetic. This will be a vast improvement for that on the existing residences. As such, we respectfully request that you grant the site plan relaxation presented before you this evening so we can continue to enhance the Central Islay community. That's all I have for now. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Gonzalez to give us a staff report and then we'll come back for questions. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This application was last heard on May 6th. The board reserved decision at that time on the buffer relaxation after comments from the Central Islay Hop-Hog Community Ambulance Agency asked about the traffic and any measures to implement a light at the Pineville Road and East Suffolk Avenue intersection. The board also asked, as stated by Mr. Clemens, to reach out to the ambulance agency to discuss their concerns. As Mr. Clemens stated, they had sent out certified mailings with no response until later this afternoon, which he spoke to someone from their agency today. I also had a discussion with someone at their office today and went over the site plan and, and went through some of their concerns. I previously also contacted the Suffolk County DPW to discuss if there was a study in the area in regards to traffic and if there were any plans at the Pineville Road and East Suffolk Avenue intersection. Alex Prego over at Suffolk County DPW did say a study was done several years ago and at the time, no immediate measures were deemed necessary by their office. They also had dialogue with the ambulance agency in regards to the installation of a emergency vehicle traffic control signal at that Pineville Road and Suffolk Avenue intersection. Basically, the agency stated that if they wanted a light there, it would have to be self-funded and constructed under one of their highway work permits. And those talks broke off after that discussion. So at this time, the applicant and staff has, has spoken to the ambulance agency, answered their questions to the best of their, you know, to our ability. We have vetted the status of the area with the county and as previously stated on the record, the Town's own traffic of, Division of Traffic Safety, as well as the outside consultant, L.K. McLean Associates, who stated that the project will generate relatively low traffic volumes and have little or no impact on emergency vehicle operations. Updated signage on Pineville Road will be implemented per the Division of Traffic Safety and the area monitored after construction and operation by the Town's Division of Traffic Safety as an additional measure. Given that the traffic concerns have been vetted to the best of their ability and the buffer relaxation requested is abiding a commercially-used property, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Fugliari?
I noticed in the staff analysis and in Mr. Gonzalez's statement that you reached out to see if any studies had been done to Suffolk County DPW and they had indicated that studies had been conducted several years back on, on Pineville and Suffolk Avenue. However, has Suffolk DPW looked at this site plan application?
Yes, they have been notified when it first came in for site plan review. So, you know, we, we send the 239F as required by law. Their office has looked at the site plan and they will be working with the applicant when they do come in and do the improvements along Suffolk Avenue.
Okay, but the proximity to the, you know, the new entrance to the property is not an issue for, for Suffolk DPW? Proximity, I mean, to Pineville?
When I spoke to Mr. Prego, he did not have that concern at the time. So it's about as far west as it could, it could reasonably be. So I think, you know, that's, that's the best, you know, for the site.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Not seeing any. I just wanted to both thank the applicant and Mr. Gonzalez for reaching out to the ambulance and the fire department who had some concerns and they were, according to my discussions with them, were satisfied with the information you both provided to them. So thank you for doing that. The applicant, like they had anything further?
No.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Brown, I'd like to make a motion to grant the application based on the staff report and the CNR is being executed by the applicant.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Brown to grant the application subject to the covenants and restrictions. Is there a second by Mr. Brown?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we pass. Thank you. Item two has been adjourned. Item three on the agenda, Planning Board Decision Item, Cassuth-Ferrison Avenue LLC, PB 2020-010, southeast corner of Lewis Cassuth Avenue and Sixth Street, Ronconcomer, 1787 Lewis Cassuth Avenue. Applicant requests to Planning Board Special Permits for an Industrial Business Service Use Involving Wholesale and the Outdoor Overnight Parking of Registered Vehicles in the Industrial Corridor District pursuant to 68-466.1C and E. Site plan modifications may also be requested as part of this application. Good evening, is the applicant here? I see the applicant coming in now.
Go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Eric J. Russo, Van Bruncheswiak and Russo with Offices 140 Main Street, Stateville, on behalf of the applicant. I also have with me Jeff Volmuth, the project engineer of Volmuth and Brush, 175 Blue Point Avenue in Blue Point. As the board is aware, we had two prior hearings on this application on June 24th and also September 9th. Mr. Matamore, at the last public hearing, after the public had spoken, was concerned about traffic site signage and I had represented and provided photographs of the area where we indicated that there was no parking signs on Cassuth on the east side as a fire zone and then the only other signage in the area was on the two roadways, Cassuth and Ferraz, and going what would be north, indicating that there could be no trucks heading north into the residential zone greater than 5,000 pounds in weight. And other than stop signs and speed limit signs of 30 miles per hour, there was no other street signage in the area. The concern of the public had to do with the truck traffic going into the residential neighborhood. We had reviewed all of the planning staff comments that were presented on September 9th. We were in agreement with the special permit conditions and the site plan modification conditions in terms of the operation and the storage and the dumpster and the plantings. And we were ready to proceed, but to clarify that point, it's our understanding from my discussion with Kelly Wosnick yesterday that she did get comments back from Traffic Safety that the signs that I had indicated were there and provided photos would be the signs that they would request be placed and there was no need for further signage, according to what she had indicated. We have nothing further to offer this evening and we're prepared to agree on behalf of the applicant as to the conditions put forward by staff and the board, should you so grant it, and we request that you do so. If you have further questions about the site plan, Mr. Volmuth is here also and we can address same, should there be any.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Wosnick for a report and then we'll come back for any questions.
Thank you.
Ms. Wosnick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to reiterate what Eric Russo said, a copy of the site plan was forwarded to Traffic Safety and there were no additional site plan changes or signage they felt was warranted. Traffic Safety stated they would recommend the applicant install signage alerting trucks to access Veterans Memorial Highway when exiting the subject property, as was presented at the last hearing. And based on that, we recommend the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions, which are the same from last time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Seeing a lot of head shaking side to side, I'll take that as a no. Is there anything further from the applicant?
I have nothing further. We appreciate your time and consideration and hope that it could be approved this evening.
Great, thank you. That being said, is there a motion? Mr. Matamore? Mr. Matamore, you were live, you just muted yourself. There you go.
There we go. Yes, I would make a motion to proceed with the granting of the application. I did make that request to make sure that we were responsive to the neighbors' concerns and that was done. And Ms. Wosniak has indicated the due diligence that's been done since that last meeting. I think it's a good application and everything that can be done has been done to mitigate the concerns of the people of the public to the north. So consequently, I would move to grant the application subject to the covenants and restrictions as worked out between Ms. Wosniak and Mr. Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Matamore. There's a motion by Mr. Matamore to grant the application subject to the covenants and restrictions. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it's granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Item four on the agenda, Town Board Application Recommendation Item, Steel Campus LLC and Marcus ISP Apartments Holding LLC as tenants in common, NYIT CZ 2020-008, east side of Carlton Avenue, County Route 17, approximately 1,215 feet north of Courthouse Drive, Central Islay 0 Carlton Avenue. Applicant requests an amendment of the master plan, a change of zone from PDD Educational Campus to PDD Multifamily and a modification of covenants and restrictions in order to rehabilitate 14 buildings for the use of a total of 354 apartments and the construction of a community center. Good evening to the applicant.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, this is Jeff Fortelli from Fortelli, Deegan, Toronto, and we represent the applicants here. And we appeared before you three weeks ago and made a presentation and the matter was adjourned and we were on for this evening. We're here to answer any questions you may have or if you want a further presentation, but I think we covered everything three weeks ago. We know the planning board has, the planning department has looked at this and maybe have some further comments, but as they say, we're here to answer anything that you would want to ask us.
There we go. Sorry. So what I'll do is I'll turn to Ms., no, it's actually Mr. Colgan. I'll turn to Mr. Colgan for the report on this one and then we'll come back for questions we might have. Mr. Colgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This application was heard at the September 9th hearing a few weeks ago. Primary concerns raised at that time were traffic and that the project consisted of rental units. As stated at the public hearing, traffic was reviewed by the Town's traffic consultant and he concluded that a college campus would generate more traffic than the proposed use and that the local highway network can accommodate the traffic generated by the residential complex. The Department of Public Works has indicated that further study of East Street Drive is warranted to analyze the best means for traffic calming of that thoroughfare. Thus, the applicant has instead offered to donate $500,000 to be used for park and transportation improvements. The master plan recommends diversifying the housing stock for this area. Permitting these buildings as rentals diversifies the housing stock and the overall housing is still primarily ownership within the Central Islay PDD. Given that the proposal supports the goals of the master plan of preservation and economic development, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached covenants and restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Colgan. Questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Yes, Sean, the mitigation money that, that, that's going to the Central Islay PPD?
That is correct.
Okay, and that money is just to be spent in Central Islay, correct?
It could be spent in downtown Central Islay or within the PDD area.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board? Not seeing any hands going up. I'll take that as a no. Is there anything further from the applicant?
No.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the application tonight and close the hearing.
Thank you. There's a motion by Mr. Brown to grant the application subject to the conditions, I'm sure. I was about to come out.
Yes, subject to the CNRs.
You know, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Fugliari, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, and the abstentions. It's granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it. Okay.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda, Planning Board Application, Public Hearing, Seventh Day Adventist PB 2020-018, northeast corner of Second Avenue and Carlton Avenue, County Route 17, Central Islay 60 Carlton Avenue. Applicant requests the Planning Board Special Permit for a mixed-use building in the Business District pursuant to 68-257.1G. Site plan modifications are requested as part of this application. Good evening to the applicant. Is the applicant here with us? I see the applicant says connecting to audio, so we'll give it one second. Can the applicant hear us? I see we have three people from the applicant here. Can any one of the three of you hear us? Four people from the applicant now.
I, I can hear you.
Yes, same here.
Okay, sorry. There's, there was, I'm on my phone now. There's technical difficulty with my office connection. Okay. Um. Let me see, start video. All right. Um. So, good evening. My name is Jessica Lees. I'm an attorney with Fortelli, Deegan, Toronto with offices at 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard in Uniondale, New York. We represent the Greater New York Corporation of Seventh Day Adventists. Also with me this evening is Lloyd Scharfenberg and Calvin Rivas, they're representatives of the corporation. I have Jan Murray, our project designer, and Pastor Camilo Carvajal. So we're here this evening requesting, there we go. Okay, we're here this evening requesting a special permit to allow for a mixed-use building at 60 Carlton Avenue in Central Islay, New York, located in the Town's Business District. The mixed use consists of a place of worship along with a single residential dwelling unit on the second floor. So churches and other places of worship are permitted as a right in the Business District and a mixed use is permitted upon approval from the planning board provided that the commercial use occupies a minimum of 30% of the gross floor area of the building pursuant to Code Section 68-257-1G. So this site is located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Carlton Avenue and Second Avenue and it's located close to the Long Island Railroad Station. The property is developed with an interconnected 11,572-square-foot building with a partial second story. The building was originally constructed in 1915. Additions were added on in 1971 and 1978 and the first floor was previously occupied by the Thomas P. Walsh Funeral Home with the second floor being utilized as a residential use. So the certificate of completion for the funeral home, which we did submit as an exhibit, shows that the second floor had been utilized as an apartment since 1978. The applicants purchased the property in 2016 and they're now seeking to legalize the conversion of the property from a funeral home to a church and they would like to continue the mixed use with the second-floor residential unit. The church has used the, the residential unit, they were going to use it for living quarters for the custodian. They currently anticipate using it for a place where special pastors and other church personnel can come, stay and visit. They can have them there rather than having them go into, use a hotel. So if this special use permit is granted, we would then come back before this board for site plan review. So the requested special use permit will not have an adverse effect on the overall community, the, the public's health, safety, or general, general welfare. The primary use of the building, a place of worship, is permitted as a right in the district and pursuant to our Lupa and New York State case law, it is deemed to have preferential status because churches and other places of worship are determined to be a benefit to the community. The church would be dedicated to serving the community, not only through their church services, but they also want to, you know, better the community and offer individual guidance and counseling. So they are, you know, trying to overall benefit the community. Aside from the minor revisions to the east and south elevations, the brunt of the alterations are going to take place in the interior of the building and would not create an architectural impact to the surrounding area. We're basically keeping the, all the exterior as is, aside from some minor changes. Last, the site has been utilized as a mixed-use building for roughly the last 40 years. The second-story addition was constructed for the purpose of creating a residence for the owners of the funeral home and maintaining this use will not have a negative impact on, on the environment or the surrounding community. And although the issue of parking and traffic is something that is certainly going to be explored further in site plan review, aside from providing onsite parking, there are two municipal lots located nearby and the church is prepared to advise congregants not to park on residential streets. And they're, in general, we're going to explore this more during site plan review. So if the board has any questions, either for myself or for the representatives of the church or for a designer, that would be my presentation.
Thank you for that. We're going to go to public comment and then come back for some questions after the staff report. So our first person to speak on this would be Deborah Kavanaugh. Ms. Kavanaugh, you're in the room whenever you want. Just unmute, go right ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I am concerned about parking on the side streets. I know there's an adjacent lot and I know the residents on the side street that they bought are also concerned about the additional parking, I guess, during the hours that they worship that would interfere with their things. So my question is, what type of signage would you put up during certain hours of church worship? Would there be a traffic sign saying, "No parking" between this hour and this hour on side streets? So that would be my most concern at this point. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you very much. We have your comments and questions and we will address them to the applicant once we're done with the public hearing portion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I have Jose Benitez. Benitez, you're in the room whenever you're ready. Go ahead. Benitez, you're in the room whenever you're ready. Go ahead. You're muted.
Hello?
You're good now. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jose Benitez, and one main concern or question that I have is that since the church wants to make it a mixed-use and half-residential, and I don't really have a problem with that. I have a question about the, the plots of land that, because I reside, I live in Two Second Avenue, and there's a plot of land between us, and I heard that they are looking forward to, to maybe acquire that property. I don't know if, because my main concern is that if they do acquire and, and fence it out, that it's really close to my front door. So that's, that would be my only concern.
Thank you. I will get that question answered for you. So you're, you're Two Second Avenue, so you're the, are you the first residential structure between the properties? I see there's a piece of land there that, are you the second residential structure?
No, I'm, I'm, yeah, I am Two Second Avenue, and I'm the, I'm the first one.
Okay, thank you. We'll get some answers for that.
Thank you.
Those are all the individuals I have signed up to speak from the public hearing aspect. I'm going to ask Ms. Woznick to give us a report, then we'll post some of the questions to the applicant and their attorney.
Thank you. The subject property is located at the northeast corner of Carlton Avenue and Second Avenue in Central ISLPPDD. The property is improved with an 11,500-square-foot building that was originally sealed in 1978 for a funeral home and an apartment on the second floor. Today, the applicant is looking to obtain a planning board special permit for a mixed-use building in connection with the conversion of the funeral home to a church use. This conversion will also require an extensive parking relaxation in addition to front yard and overall landscaping relaxations. The site is currently in site plan review, and changes are proposed to improve the parking layout and add some much-needed plantings. Although the parking relaxation is high, there is a municipal parking lot to the north of the subject property. However, staff has received phone calls regarding parking issues, stating that during church services, the municipal lot gets full, and cars can be found parked up and down Second Avenue, and even on the sidewalks. If the board feels the parking concerns are adequately addressed tonight, conditions have been prepared, granting the relaxation in connection with specifically the church use. Staff could also add additional conditions to require the number of fixed seats in the church, or the GFA of the church be reduced to help with the parking concerns heard tonight.
Thank you. I guess we'll go right to the applicant to discuss parking. You've heard the questions posed by Ms. Kavanaugh. Can you talk us a little about what your plans would be for parking and parking restrictions during hours of worship, as she?
Sure. So certainly, we realize that parking is a concern. That is something that we would be prepared more for specifically site plan, considering that the residential mixed use is actually going to assist in that the residence is taking up part of the upstairs and, and reducing the amount of square footage for the church use. So specifically for this application, it's really pertaining just to the special use between the, the, the mixed use, the special permit between the mixed use of the residence and the church. As far as parking itself, I do understand that that is coming up. The, they are looking into options. This is something we're exploring right now. And as far as they would, the, the church's primary hours, their, the brunt of their services take place on Saturday. They certainly, the municipal lot especially are, are less frequented on the weekends, especially the train station lot, a lot of their, their individuals' carpool, as well as take public transportation and walk from the local community. So there is, as far as where there's availability in the municipal lots on the weekends. And again, we are, are looking into more options that we would be able to address further during site plan review.
And, and I might have missed, did you address specifically signage-wise? I know you mentioned that, Ms. Kavanaugh mentioned that. What was specifically your plans would be there?
As far as the church.
Notifying your members of the church in terms of where they can and cannot park, and how you would go about enforcing that with the members of your congregation?
Sure. So I mean, we have absolutely, we're 100% cooperative with advising them that they can't park on the residential streets. Lloyd Scharfenberg, have, has we done anything with other sites as far as signage? Or?
You know, I, Lloyd Scharfenberg, the corporation secretary. And when we first purchased the property, one of the things we looked at was the parking with the municipal, the one lot right next to the, the building, which I think is rarely, if, used. And then the, the train station lot, which is used, I'm sure extensively during the week, but, but not on weekends. I, I noticed in some material sent today in the site plan, some conditions on, on parking, which seem, seem very fair, and basically saying, hey, if there is a problem going forward, we would be required to make some, some, some additional changes, et cetera. The, you know, the, the main thing is, and Pastor Carvajal is here to continually educate our, our members, you know, either park in our lot or the municipal lot and not on the street. So it'd be a thing of education. There's another thing also, which is beyond our, you know, beyond our control, is I know in some areas, they, they give residents placards so that, you know, the, the parking on the street is for residents only, which then obviously, you know, our parishioners would not qualify.
Right, that may inhibit them having guests or other people come over and park in front of their houses, but certainly, can you just talk, what, I see you're talking about the municipal lot directly to the north, the small one that's on Carlton Avenue? And where is the actual, which train lot are you talking about? The one across Carlton Avenue on the other side?
Yeah, it's about a block or two north.
Right. North, northwest, on the other side of Carlton Avenue?
Yes, yes.
And no concerns about parishioners making their way across Carlton Avenue to?
No, and we really, we really, that pastor says that at this point in time, there's, there's 20 to 24 families that, that attend. So our lot and, and the one adjacent to us would be, would be sufficient.
What is the total number of spots in the adjacent lot and your lot?
Jan, do you know that offhand? Jan's our planner. You're on mute.
You're muted.
Yeah, you're on mute, Jan.
Still muted. Bottom left, maybe, of your screen.
There you go.
There we go.
I know that there are two municipal lots, a crossroad on Carlton Avenue, the station before the train track, and the ones of, on our side, of the church. All those together with ours, we have more than enough parking. How many there are exactly, I do not know, remember, but I know that we're covered. If we're able to utilize the municipal parking as well as our, not doing any on the streets, just using the parking, and possibly agreement with the church across the street to share their parking, that they would use it on Sunday. We might be able to use it on Saturday type of. So we had options to cut the parking deficit.
Mr. Murray, I caught about a third of what you said, because you were cutting, I think you have a bad connection on your end, so.
Well, one, one, one of the, you mentioned, there's a church right across the street. And so we have, we do not have it in place, but talking with them about allowing us to use their parking lot on Saturday. And then, you know, obviously, if they needed to use some of ours on Sunday.
Right, they, they don't have services on Saturday. They're, those are on Sunday?
Yes.
So would not conflict there. Yeah, I, so certainly, I think we're just going to need some more information, more specific information about whether or not you have an agreement with them, or whether or not they're willing to do that. We should probably look at more closely the amount of spots in the lot directly to the north. And, and see how many total spots you have. And you said, how many members of the congregation do you have?
There's about 190 members on the books. Average attendance is 140, 150. But, you know, primarily family groups, so about 20 to 24 families on a normal, a normal attendance. So it's a Hispanic, Hispanic congregation. We found in our, our Hispanic congregation, generally, there's larger families than, than the English-speaking Caucasian congregations.
Right, that, that's putting about seven people per car if we're doing 20 cars at 140 people.
Well, well, some, some walk, because they're close by, and some use public transportation also.
Got it, okay. Can, can you also speak to, there's the issue of, are you considering, or is there talks about purchasing another piece of property near this? Mr. Benitez pointed, I guess he has the house on the L-shaped property, which is, the driveway, I think, is directly behind you, and the house might wrap around to the side.
I'm, I'm the corporate secretary, and any sales and purchases go through my office. My associate Calvin is, is here. And neither one of us have ever heard of this until, until the comment this evening. So, you know, it, it's possible that a, a member said, hey, there's some vacant property here, maybe we should purchase it, but, but I have heard nothing officially from the congregation.
Okay. Ms. Woznick, can, can we just talk about, I don't, obviously, there's no site plan yet, so it's hard for me to envision, but I know you said there are some issues related to, I guess, landscaping, front yard, and the like, so will, will there be improvements made, or is the property staying as is and just seeking to convert?
I can't share my screen from here, but they did submit a site plan application. They were in site plan first. And they are going to be adding landscaping.
Mr. Colgan's going to put it up, so you could talk us through it.
Yeah, and then they're going to be improving, I guess, the layout of the parking stalls, because currently, the way they are right now, they don't have proper, like, backup aisles and things like that. So they have more spots now. They're going to have a little bit less, but they're going to be at least adequate spots where cars can get in and out of.
And there'd be added landscaping along with the property for number two, Mr. Benitez? Okay, here we go.
Yes.
Does somebody want to talk us through the site plan?
Yeah, sure. I don't know if you could scroll down. I think the landscape plan is scanned with it. Possibly. There you go. So I don't know if you guys have the aerials out in front of you, but if you look now, there's really not too many plantings, especially along the eastern property line where there is that one residence, so they're adding a ton of trees there. There's going to be a ton of street trees, as you can see, along Second Avenue. They're going to improve the flow of traffic with the way the parking stalls are laid out. There's only going to be the one curb cut going in and the other one coming out. So it's definitely going to be an improvement as to what is there right now.
Okay, and maybe Mr. Benitez is talking about, I guess, maybe the town-owned property, it looks like behind the paved lot that's owned by the town that's currently not paved. Is that what, possibly this directly to the north, the northeast side of where the parking is?
Yeah, I could assume. I mean, that's, that's owned by the town of ISLPPDD, I believe, but any sort of improvement to that, they would need the 25-foot residential buffer, so.
Right.
They would have to come back before this board if they were going to do anything with that vacant piece of property, if the town were even to consider selling it.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. I'm going to turn to other board members for questions. I can't see you, so if you are saying something.
This is.
Kevin, go ahead. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Kelly, can you tell me, I know you said that there's, oh, they're asking for a big relaxation with the parking, but is, do we have specific numbers as to the relaxation they're looking for percentage-wise or numbers?
The parking required is 109 spaces, and they're providing 18, so it's an 83% parking relaxation.
And do we know approximately how many spaces are in that municipal lot?
That I do not have the number of, but I can get you the answer for that. It's not a large lot.
Also, on the number of spaces, and by, you know, by code, the planning department adds up the, the numbers for all the different rooms in the building. But at a level, you're either in the church, or you're in the social hall. You aren't, you aren't in both. And so the, the theoretical planning board number is, I, I wouldn't say double, but, but probably, I'm just going off topic, maybe 40% over, you know, what, what would the actual number of people, you know, coming.
What are the number of apartments upstairs?
It's a one, one residential unit. There's three bedrooms. I think I, I did submit the floor plans as an exhibit as well, if they're available. But I, again, I, and I do 100% appreciate the board's concerns with the parking. But just to reiterate that this is going to come up for you for the whole site plan review, and we will have someone more elaborately discuss parking, and we are going to cover our requests for relaxation and have the details of the municipal lots more thoroughly discussed in the site plan review. And especially discuss as well the, the, there will be simultaneous use of the sanctuary, as well as the meeting rooms and the conference rooms. So while the demand does appear a bit high, and the relaxation appears high, in reality, we are not going to be needing all of that space based on what the code requires for that space.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had a couple more questions.
Mr. Brown, it's all you.
Okay, for the applicant, could you go through the operation of the church? You have a social hall. Is it, it's something that's for rentals? We have socia's. Is there classes there? What other things take place besides this service on the weekend?
Sure. So I'm, the, this will, again, this is all going to be part of the site plan application, but the, basically Saturdays are the, the largest part of the service. So Saturdays, they have Sabbath School and Worship Service from about 8:45 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then you have, they have lunch for some, sometimes they have lunch gathering for the same people who were at the service. Some of them stay afterwards for some part of, for a little lunch group after. And then, nothing until 5:00 p.m. You have youth service from 5:00, 7:00 to 7:00 p.m. You have pathfinders, which is similar, I'm sorry, the, no, sorry, that's on Saturday, so 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. is youth service. Then on Sundays, they do have smaller groups, pathfinders, which are similar to scouts and worship service. So those are very small groups. Those are not large, largely attended events. Then on, on weeknight, one weeknight on Wednesdays, you have prayer meeting worship service. Again, that's a small gathering. That's not a, a large attended event.
Is there any rentals?
We, we don't normally rent the facilities. You know, I bet if a church member was having a wedding for sake of argument and wanted to use it, something like that, but we, we don't normally just have it as a, as an open place to rent.
Mr. Brown, is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. And would you be okay with that as a covenant and restriction on the property in terms of the rental of the facility?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think we would be comfortable saying it's, it's only for, for church and related use. And, in other words, if, if it's a something like that.
I think you have a bad connection there.
I, I could step in there with that. I think he was saying, explaining that we would certainly be fine with the covenant that restricts renting it to outside parties. We do want to reserve the right to use it if, if some, a church member wants to, you know, for instance, have a wedding that they, they're allowed to permit it to have. At the, but we certainly, there certainly wouldn't be renting it out to third parties. It would be congregation members using it.
And in that regard. And in that regard, what is the largest space? In other words, how many, what's the occupancy if you would rent it out for a wedding or something like that, that one of the rooms or the facility could hold?
The largest space would be the sanctuary, the church meeting space. Jessica, I don't remember the number offhand.
The sanctuary.
I think the legal capacity for the sanctuary is 100 people.
Okay, so that again, depending on how the weddings go, may have different, I think the main issue tonight, I'll, are there other questions from the board? Before I give my wrap up that nobody wants to hear. I think the main concern for us is really just going to be to go back and delve into the parking, look at those lots. And from doing a calculation Sean has done for me, it looks like the municipal lot is 17. That's right next door, 17 spots in that. You have 18. That puts you at 35. If you're saying 24 cars, I'm not sure how many people work or be at, you know, at the church, that's not included in that number, how many cars that might be as well as obviously tenant upstairs, if they have three bedrooms, maybe two cars or something to the like, we can sit down and go through the numbers and where their proposed parking is. Look at the size of the hall and have those discussions with Ms. Wasnick and, you know, hopefully resolve those. The satisfaction of the planning board, we can bring it back at that point. And then this to Ms. Kavanaugh's point, I just want to look at, you know, signage or what else we can put in place. Restricting parking on the street might be unfair to the neighbors if it doesn't allow them to have guests come over and park anywhere. You know, you guys having that provision in the covenants and restrictions and you guys enforcing that certainly would be helpful. And if there's a violation, you come back before the board, as you pointed out, Mr. Schaffenberg, that condition that's in there. So my recommendation would be to sit down, review those concerns that we have this evening with Ms. Wasnick and whoever the representatives can be from the church or and get those issues resolved so we can come back. I turn back to the applicant or any board members alike. They had anything further?
I would just ask if that, if that's time that we would be proceed, be able to proceed after conversing to proceed then to site plan and then maybe tie in this application with the overall site plan review to consolidate for hearing purposes in the future.
Yeah. And my opinion is, I mean, if you can get them with Ms. Wasnick in the next couple of days and work this out, our next meeting is on the 14th of October. I have no issue if those matters get resolved, that we come back on the 14th and get you on the next agenda. Certainly not looking to delay it. I think there were some issues that are raised with regards to parking tonight that, you know, little more solid answers would be helpful for us to move forward, at least from my position. I'm not the only member of the board. I defer to my colleagues on that as well, but just to get some of those questions answered, I'm not necessarily opposed to the project. I think it may work. I just think we want to look at those numbers and drill down into the parking to make sure it does work and it does not pose a burden to the residents on Second Avenue.
Absolutely. And I don't even think we need, we would be pushing to rush to get on to October 14th, but just as far as when we do come back to consolidate the purpose of considering the special permit with the site plan altogether.
Sure. I don't know if there's any other, if there's other posting requirements, how that would work. I'll defer to Ms. Wasnick or anyone else, but I mean, if there's no.
If you look, or what if you listen to the staff report, I included the site plan modifications, which is the landscaping and then the parking relaxation. So it's all grouped together as far as your site plan modifications and your special permit.
Ms. Wasnick's one step ahead. Okay. So is there anything further from the board? Mr. Brown?
Yes, just for Ms. Lisa, as the planning board, we don't approve the site plan. It's done with the planning staff after, you know, we approved the application and you work with the planning staff for the site plan approval. So the biggest sticking that we have here is the relaxation of parking and the other items that the chairman has mentioned that we have to work out.
Absolutely.
Anything further from the applicant?
Not at this time.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and reserve decision.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown to close the public hearing and reserve decision. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bruno, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, we're reserved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six on the agenda, planning board application, public hearing has been adjourned. Item seven on the agenda, planning board application, public hearing, Mike's Express Inc., PB 2020-027, South Side of Montauk Highway, 27A, 195 feet west of Brittle Way, Oakdale, 1270 Montauk Highway. Applicant requests a modification of planning board special permit conditions associated PB 2008-021 in order to change the hours of operation. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Angela Fiorello. I'm presenting on behalf of Mike's Express Inc. Mike's Express Inc., DBA Grand Cafe is a coffee shop slash restaurant serving breakfast and lunch. And as such, we are requesting a modification of the planning board special permit PB 2008-021 only to change the hours of operation to allow us to serve breakfast and lunch from the hours of 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM daily. And really that's our only request. So I do appreciate your kind consideration.
Thank you. I do not see anyone who signed up to speak on this. If you are here on the phone and would like to speak on this one, it's hit star nine now. So we know that you're here on this application. Not seeing that person raise their hand by hitting star nine. I'm going to turn to Ms. Wasnick to give us a report.
Thank you. The subject property is located on the south side of Montauk Highway in Oakdale, across from the Oakdale train station. The property is improved with the single story building occupied by a forest and a multi-tenant building occupied by hair salon, nail salon and a restaurant. Tonight, the applicant is looking to modify the hours of operation for the restaurant use to allow for a breakfast and lunch cafe. The applicant has requested hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM. There are no open complaints with the property and the proximity to the train station, breakfast cafe could be beneficial to commuters. In addition, it seems the conditions originally imposed in 2008 have been met. Based on this, planning recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions, which are similar to those imposed in 2008.
Ms. Wasnick, questions from the board? Not seeing any. Ms. Fiorello, would you like to add anything else?
Uh, no, that's it. I just want to let you know that we did get approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health.
Thank you. That being said, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to.
Frugari did have his finger up before you, but I'm going to let you go, Mr. Brown. Okay, Mr. Frugari, you got it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown and Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we close this public hearing and grant this application subject to the covenants and restrictions.
Thank you. It's a motion by Mr. Frugari to close the public hearing and grant the application subject to the covenant and restrictions, covenants and restrictions. Is there a second? Mr. Matamore, seconds of motion, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, the application is granted. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Item number eight on the agenda, town board application, public hearing, 2300 Sunrise Highway Realty LLC, care of John Sell, CZ 2019-009, southwest corner of Sunrise Highway Service Road, State Route 27, number 2300 and Comac Road, 2300 Sunrise Highway Islip. Applicant requests a change of zone from Residence B District to Business 3 District. And a town board special permit for a gasoline service station pursuant to 68-302C and a planning board special permit for a convenience market to 68-302.1D. Site plan modifications are required as part of this application. Good evening, Mr. Germano.
Members of the board, Guy W. Germano, attorney for the applicant, 4250 Veterans Memorial Highway, Holbrook, New York. This is a continuation of a public hearing that was held before this board in September of 2019. The, this application, you've already explained what it's for. Can I, Sean, can you give me the screen so I can do a screen share? Just give me one moment, please. I'm going to put this up. Okay, you're sharing. Can you see, can the board see that screen?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we've got the technology working here. All right. When, at the last hearing, the applicant listened to what the board said, concerns of the board, the members of the community, and have made significant changes to the application, which I'm going to go through pretty, go through with you now. First, the number of pump islands has been reduced. As you can see in the center under the canopy, we reduced the number of pump islands from six to four. And we've and therefore reduce the number of fueling spaces from 12 to eight. We have also, as a result, shrunk the footprint of the canopy. In addition, we have restored the 25 foot setback on the south, required 25 foot setback, and you can see that on screen here. That's showing. Okay. In addition, the building has been moved back. The convenience store, 2,000 square foot convenience store has been moved back as much as possible, implied with the setback requirements. The curb cut on Sunrise Highway has been moved 25 feet to the west, leaving more room for maneuvering in and out. The hours of operation have been changed and this is, the hours of operation will now be, the facility will open at 5:00 AM and close at 11:00 PM. At the same time, the lighting, the canopy lighting will be turned off at 11:00 PM as well. In addition, significant traffic improvements have been made off-site on Comac and Grant and Comac and the service, and the service road. And I have Wayne Moore with us a little bit later on, who will go through the traffic study and explain the improvements that have been made. We have worked with the town's consultants on this, and I believe the consultants are in agreement with the proposed mitigation measures, which will be solely funded by the applicant. All delivery trucks, gas delivery trucks and others will enter and leave the site through the Sunrise Service Road entrance and exit. In addition, we have worked on the architecture with town planning department, Kelly Wasnick. This is what you see on the screen now is the elevation. This is a residential look. All four sides will be using superior materials, which will include cement fiber product, which you would know as Hardy plank and and a brick fascia. The now I'm going to go to the, and we have received a preliminary approval from the planning department on the architecture, including the canopy, which is designed to blend in with the, with the look of the convenience store. Now, the next, I'm going to show you an aerial photograph with the site plan superimposed on it, because I think this is significant look. Here you will see the existing, this is the existing building. Can you see this? Oh, here. This is the existing building here. And you can see how we've moved the canopy back. I'm going to highlight the canopy here. The canopy, it's moved back well beyond the, most of the existing building. The convenience store is located here. Can you, I don't know if you can see that. The yellow one, the green is not working so well. Okay. And we also want you to note here that the parking is moved significantly back. Here is the existing parking. It's actually inside the town, the state DOT right of way, for which there's a license to do that. And parking is moved here now. So there's going to be significantly more landscape area between the parking and Comac Road. The, in addition to that, we've agreed with planning today that we're going to build three of the spaces that are shown here. We're only going to build three of these spaces. And we're going to land bank four. And so total places that we will be building will be 12. And I think everyone agrees that that's the most that might be needed. Along the base, along the southern edge, you can see the landscaping here and the 25 foot buffer. You can also see there's a natural buffer here created by an existing paper street, which goes to nowhere. I guess that should remain forever. In addition, we have received the, you can see the wetlands line. You really can't see it too well here, but the wetlands line is like this. And we've received DOT, DEC approval for the building in the adjacent area as shown here. So we have approval from DEC for the building as shown. Okay. In addition, we have, I'm going to show you a rendering of the building now.
Mr. Germano, just to clarify, when you were talking about the 25 foot buffer, is that going to, is it the current size that it is or is it going to go into where the parking is a little bit now on the south side? Is that currently 25 feet? Were you highlighting that down there or is it going to get a little larger?
It's 10 feet now.
Okay, so it's going to become 25 feet. Okay, so you're adding 15 feet of landscaping on the south side.
We're going to provide the additional 25 foot buffer and I as shown in, on this plan.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
See here, you can see it here. Okay?
Yes, Mr. Frugari.
Mr. Germano, can you go back to the other screen?
Yes.
Where you had the site a plan superimposed on the aerial? Is the curb cut on Sunrise Highway Service Road, is that being moved or is that?
Yes, that's being moved. It's here. Can you see this?
Okay.
That's where it's being moved to. So it's going to be closed here. This is closing and it's being moved here. And, and in addition, I just want to mention that we have preliminary approval from state DOT for the curb cut on the Sunrise Highway Service Road.
And just before you take this screen down, your traffic engineer should address comments from vehicles exiting the site on Comac Road. So they, they don't cross over that. Right now it's just a yellow stripe hashed median. I could see people coming out of there wanting to go north on, on Comac Road.
Right. Our traffic expert, Wayne Moore, will be testifying before the board. I also have our real estate expert, Mike Lynch, and our design professional, Glenn Graham, with me here tonight. Now, I wanted to show the rendering of the building that was approved. You can see the architectural details here and the details of the siding and the look of the building, which the town has agreed to and which my client has agreed to. And you can see the canopy with the pumps has a very softened look. At this time, I'm going to ask one other thing. We do have, we have letters of support from the community. My client, John Sell, who was the principal of the owner, has attempted to meet with everyone in the community who would meet with him. He's met with several people. And we have submitted letters of support from a number of the people. And I've got an aerial up here now, which shows the location of the premises here. And then individuals who, individuals who live close by, who have sent letters of support. And we've submitted those to the town. All right. At this time, unless you have All right, at this time, unless you have questions, some of the things that I've talked to, I'd like to introduce Wayne Moore and let him discuss the traffic study and the building, site plan circulation, and the improvements that will be made on Comac Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's put this up. Okay, there's Wayne. Wayne, we'll put up the, the material for you.
Perfect. Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Wayne Muller with the firm of Robinson and Muller Engineering. Our offices are at 50 Elm Street, Huntington, New York. I was in attendance at the last hearing back in September of 2019. We were charged with a couple of different things based on the input that we received from the board and the public at that hearing. One of them was to prepare a traffic impact study, which we did. The study that we prepared was prepared in accordance with recognized standards and guidelines. It was, it is dated March 6, 2020, and was submitted to the town planning department and reviewed by the town's consultant. The town's consultant, L.K. McLean and Associates, commented on the study in their letter dated March 30, 2020. We then prepared another document dated August 24, 2020, which was again submitted to the town in response to McLean's comments. And just to briefly go through our report, as indicated by the board, we did perform, perform traffic counts at the intersection of Sunrise Highway South Service Road and Comac Road and Comac Road and Grant Avenue and Wallace Street during the recognized peak periods. In accordance with recognized procedures, we performed an existing no-build-and-build analysis. And the results of those analyses indicated that based on our analysis, we don't believe that the, the traffic generated by the project that's before the, the board tonight will have a significant impact on traffic conditions in and around the subject property. As Mr. Germano has indicated, there were some significant enhancements to the project from the last hearing to the current hearing. And one of the most significant things is the number of pump islands has decreased from six to four, meaning that the original proposal had 12 fueling stations, and now we're proposing eight. The building and the site was shifted as far west as it could, meaning that we were able to shift the driveway on the service road as far west as we could. As Mr. Germano indicated in his, in his testimony that we did receive preliminary approval from the DOT for the curb cut on the South Service Road and its configuration depicted on the plans being right turns in and right turns out. We were able to have discussions with the planning department as it related to the driveway that we're proposing on Comac Road. And what's before the board and the public now is a, a plan that we had prepared called the conceptual plan, dated for the, the potential roadway improvements that are being proposed by the applicant as part of this project. As you can see, the driveway on Comac Road will be configured for right turns entering and right turns exiting. There will be a concrete median installed to separate those two movements. In addition, across from the driveway, there will be a hard island installed to preclude people from turning out of the Comac Road driveway and attempting to travel north on Comac Road. As you can see, we, we put a brick texture on it. It'll be flush concrete, so vehicles will not be allowed to make that movement coming out of the Comac Road driveway and attempt to turn left to go north on Comac Road.
Just to clarify, you said right turn entering and right turn exiting on Comac Road. There is still a left turn entering on Comac Road, correct?
That's correct. Now, we can get that far yet.
Oh, sorry.
As part of our proposal, we are proposing to eliminate the striped median and allow left turns to enter the site from Comac Road going further south. One thing that we did notice, and Guy, if you could go to an aerial photograph, I think it would be pretty helpful to see. But you could see that at the intersection of Grant and Comac, there's a very, very large radius that exists for people traveling south on Comac Road to turn into Grant. If we could go back to the improvement plan, what we propose to do is actually formally channelize the right turn from Comac Road into Grant, and again, install a hard concrete median in order to protect those turns. Guy, if you could go to the Glenn's site plan that has the roadway improvements superimposed onto it? I think you have that as part of your. Got that one?
Wait, let's see. I think I have it someplace else.
I could email it to you if you want me to.
I could also put it up.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this, this is a much better depiction as to what we're proposing. The, you could see on the, on the site plan, there's a very large radius from Comac Road to Grant, and there's a very large expanse of pavement. In discussions with the, the Town Traffic Safety Department, what we've done is we've kind of tightened up or formalized the intersection. You could see that under current conditions, the stop line on Grant is about 20 feet back from what we're proposing on the plans. And, and that lends itself to vehicles not having adequate sight distance in order to view cars that are coming from Comac Road, either turning into Grant or going south. So what we're really doing is we're installing this hard island to separate out the southbound Grant traffic that's turning, southbound Comac traffic that's turning onto Grant, moving the stop line up, installing crosswalks across Grant, so you could now walk down the west side of Comac Road and then cross into the concrete median and then continue south on Comac Road. That currently doesn't exist. And what we're doing is we're formalizing the intersection and improving sightlines for motorists that are traveling from Grant onto Comac Road. They'll be able to see unobstructed views of the traffic now that's on Comac Road going into Grant and going down south on Comac Road by performing these improvements. In addition, we're going to be tightening up the radius that's on the southwest corner of the intersection of Comac Road and Grant by tightening that up and allowing the installation of the crosswalks. As you could see on the, the northern portion of the improvements, we're going to be protecting the crosswalk by, again, installing a, another concrete median north of the crosswalk to allow another refuge for pedestrians. One other major component that we found was that, and I think I testified this at the last public hearing, was that the majority of the traffic generated by these types of facilities is pass-by in nature, meaning that a large percentage of the traffic generated by a gasoline service station with a convenience store already exists within the, the traffic stream passing the site. Industry standard data would indicate that that, that number would range from somewhere between 50 to 60 or 70%. We were charged with actually performing studies for Hess when they existed at their gas stations to determine what an actual pass-by percentage on Long Island is. As part of our study for Hess, we studied three different Hess stations. All of them happened to be within the town of Smithtown, two located on New York State 347, and one on Route 25 in Kings Park. And what we found was that the, the average pass-by percentage for this type of traffic hovered in the area of about 75%. So as a result, there's a, there's a relatively small quantity of newly generated traffic that would be generated by this type of facility because the bulk of the traffic comes from the traffic streams passing the site. As indicated in my August 24, 2020, letter to the, to the planning department, we calculated the actual increase in traffic generated by the project on the various different approaches to the project, meaning the Sunrise Highway Service Road, on Comac Road, and on Grant Avenue. And what we found was that the, the increase in traffic ranged from 0.53%, depending on the approach, to a maximum of 4.17%. And generally, it, it was in the range of about 1.5 to 2%. So the actual increase in traffic accountable for this type of development in this area, in my opinion, i- is relatively minor. We've also looked at all the sightlines coming in and out of the driveways, and we found them to be acceptable based on all these factors. It is my professional opinion that the granting of this application, provided that the applicant install the improvements that I've discussed at the intersection of Grant and Comac will not create any undue traffic ingestion or hazard, and that there'll be a relatively minor impact associated with the construction of the fueling facility on this property. Thank you.
Mr. Muller, I'm just looking at the site plan that's in front of us now. Do you plan on putting any signage further back from the driveway that dumps out onto Comac Road? So people know before they get into that long driveway that it's a right turn only, so they're not forced to the end to either then make some crazy maneuver to get a left or go down to Grant and make a U-turn right there, so that they, they know ahead of time before they enter this long driveway onto Comac?
You know, that, we, we did not do that, but that would be a, a, you know, an enhancement to the site plan if we were to add some internal signage, wayfinding signs to allow motorists that are on the site to traverse the strip in a more, you know, in a more cohesive manner. That would be something that could be added without a doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. At this point, I would like to ask our design professional, Glenn Graham, to speak before the board. He's going to take my seat here.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Graham with Graham Associates, 1981 Union Boulevard, Bay Shore, New York. We are the architects that designed the facility. I'm going to speak a little bit about the environmental issues that were raised at the initial hearing. The, the tanks on the property are, were designed in accordance with Suffolk County Health Department standards and New York State DEC regulations. They are double-wall tanks. They have also double-wall piping, and then several different types of alarm systems that would protect the groundwater. The tanks themselves, being double-wall, there's an interstitial space that has an alarm sensor in it. So if there's a breach from the secondary tank, we would notice groundwater, detect a leak. If there's a primary tank leak, that also would get detected. The pumps themselves have a containment pan underneath them with a sump sensor. So if there's any type of drip in the dispenser, that would fall into the dispenser pan, trigger an alarm. Same thing with the piping being double-wall. It's all pitched back to the tank. The tank has a sump on it that would detect the leak. In addition to those environmental protections, there's also a high-level alarm that would go off when the tank's 90% full. If the driver decided to ignore the alarm, there is a mechanical valve inside the tank that would shut off the fuel. There's audible and visual alarms, both at the tank field and then at the attendance location. In addition, there is emergency shut-off switches located in several parts of the facility, and then a fire suppression system located in the canopy in the event of any type of spillage or a fire situation that would get automatically triggered. And I'm available to answer any questions the board may have, either architecturally or environmentally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to introduce our real estate consultant, Mike Lynch, to address some of the concerns with regard to real estate values in the area. Mike?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Lynch. I'm a real estate appraiser with offices at 15 Dewey Street, Huntington, New York. I have appeared before this board in the past, as well as the zoning and town boards of the town of Islip. I visited the site last week, and I took a number of photos of the existing property as well as the surrounding neighborhood along the South Service Road and Comac Road and Grant Avenue and Wallace Street in this hamlet of Islip. So the property, as the board's aware, is known as 2300 Sunrise Highway in Islip. It's at the southwest corner of the South Service Road of Sunrise Highway and Comac Road, identified on the Suffolk County tax map as section 319, block 2, lots 94.1 and 95. Lot 95 is currently, which is the corner lot, that is zone B3. That's improved with the former Four Bay Auto Repair Shop. It's been vacant for some time. The secondary lot immediately to the west of Lot 95 is the, is wooded, and that is a parcel where the proposed accessory convenience store would be located. And that is zoned Residence B. And as part of this application, we are looking for a change of zone from Residence B to B3 to accommodate that accessory convenience store to the overall project of the gas station. The overall site is 0.86 acres. And again, it's zone B3 and Residence B. We're seeking, in addition to the change of zone for that, for the westerly parcel, special permit from the town board for the four bump, four pump gas station, as described by Mr. Germano. We need a special permit from this board for the accessory convenience store. And we need a minor parking variance, as Mr. Muller covered. And again, the, the change of zone to accommodate the, the retail convenience component of the overall project. In this project, as described, Mr. Germano, they've made certain changes from when we were last here, a year ago, September 219. We've made, we've moved the, the canopy as well as the convenience store further west along the South Service Road. We've increased the, the buffers from 10 feet to 25 feet. And if we have the photos that I took, pull those up. If you look at photo, can you get them up there on the screen? Okay, if we go to photo three, that's the existing, go back. Photo three is the existing parking lot that's on the south side of the existing Four Bay Repair Shop. And you can see those parking spaces to the left in the photo. Those will, that area where those parking stalls are will be revegetated, so that we now have a fully conforming 25-foot south buffer at the south property line. There'll also be a 25-foot buffer at the westerly property line adjacent to the two-family house that sits to the west of the property on the south side of the South Service Road. So just getting back on the buffers, not only are we going to be conforming and actually adding back a revegetated area of the site, but there's also, as Mr. Germano pointed out, a paper street immediately to the south known as Bonaparte Avenue. That's a 50-foot paper street that's largely wooded. That's going to remain intact and added to the 25-foot that we're going to be providing. The nearest single-family residence to the south of this on Grant Avenue will actually be farther away from any paved area. And again, it'll be 75 feet away from the actual operation of the, of, in the application. What else here? So just briefly going over the surrounding area. Of course, it's on the South Service Road. Of course, it's on the South Service Road and Comac Road. The property is, Mr. Muller pointed out, the large radius that's at the easterly end of this property, and that's largely a grassy shoulder area that acts as a buffer of the property, again, from not only the residences to the south and to the southeast, but also for the motorists. And we have, there's an easement that runs across that grassy State DOT property. We're actually going to be reclaiming a portion of the northeasterly part of that. We go back to the colored sight plan. So at the northeasterly corner, if you look at the existing paved area that's as part of the repair shop, that area is going to be revegetated as well. So we're actually going to be increasing that State DOT grassy area from what it stands now. And again, I've mentioned to the south, that's going to be revegetated as well, the paved area at the south side of the site. But generally speaking, the surrounding area, to the immediate east of this, at the southeast corner of Comac Road and the South Service Road, is more State DOT land. And to the south of the Paper Street, which is known technically as Bonaparte Avenue, you have your nearest single-family residence, and that's located, I believe, at 330 Grant Avenue. And again, they're going to be well buffered from this project, 75 feet of actual buffer technical area, if you include the existing right-of-paper Street right-of-way and the 25 feet that we're going to be providing. So as far as any impact to property values, I've looked at the stations that, along the South Service Road in the town of Islip that exist nearest to this property. The, there's a Shell station that sits at the southwest corner of Pacific Avenue and the South Service Road in East Islip. That's a similar type operation to this in that it's a four-pump station. It's Zone B3. It's just under 8/10ths of an acre. We're at 0.82, 1/100th of an acre. There's a small C store, and the surrounding neighborhood immediately to the south of the property is very similar to the community to the south of this in the hamlet of Islip. I looked at sales, and that's also a 24-hour operation, from what I understand, that particular Shell station. But I've looked at sales over the last 20 years in public record within an immediate 1/8 radius of that particular Shell station on the south side of the South Service Road and east of the Hector State Parkway. I then compared that sampling of sales with a very similar sample on the Westerly side of Hector State Parkway, also in the hamlet of East Hampton, I'm sorry, East Islip, within the East Islip School District, actually just south of the Hector condominiums. And what I found was that the sample size that I took to the west of Hector State Park are very similar type homes to that of the homes immediately to the south of that Shell station, which again is very similar to what is proposed in this application, but it's a 24-hour operation. I didn't find that the median sale price between the two groups was appreciably different. So based on that study, I don't feel that the presence of this type of gasoline operation, and again, we're not a 24-hour operation, but nonetheless, the presence of that gasoline station and convenience store did not have any substantial impact to property values. So to sum up, this application for the special permits, as well as the change of zone and the minor parking variance, should they be approved, will not result in any adverse impact to the character of the immediate area. Again, this is a site on the major east-west South Service Road in Suffolk County. And given the planned architectural design of the site, the planned landscaping and improved engineering of the site, I don't feel there'll be any adverse impact to, again, either the character of the area or pattern of development or property values. At this point, I can answer any questions if the board may have any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Germano, I'm not sure if you have much more in your application tonight. You're a bit over on your 30 minutes, but go ahead.
Yeah, that, I think that concludes our application, and we'll answer any questions. I have everyone available here, including the owner, if you have any questions.
Great. So we're going to go to a public comment, then we're going to go to a staff report, and then we're going to come back for questions. So I'm going to go to Bridget Anderson. Ms. Anderson, when you're ready, just unmute, and you can go ahead. Anderson?
Yes, I'd like to raise a question. I actually have a few questions. I've been a resident of 137 Comac Road in Islip since 1974. I spoke at the last hearing. My concern tonight is, again, the fact that the number of accidents that already exist now at this intersection will only increase, not decrease. The fact that Mr. Sales has had to reconstruct the entire intersection to make it safer speaks to that concern. My second question is that while Mr. Sales reached out to the community and the surrounding houses, his comments that, "Well, if my gas station doesn't get approved, I can always open a cash checking store or a smoke shop." I really would like to ask the board to consider the fact that if you have to reconstruct the entire South Service Road, the entire Comac Road intersection, that there is a serious problem existing already. And adding a gas station and food mart, granted, the hours are better, but you are still increasing the amount of traffic. If access and excess or exit from this gas station is going to be on the South Service Road, that is also the right-hand turning road lane to access Grant Avenue and Comac Road. We also have a school that uses that road, Comac Road, and the South Service Road and Grant Avenue to enter for the start of the school day and to exit at the end of the school day. This is a major concern. I also would like to address the fact that when the gentleman that just spoke was taking the pictures of the property last week or a few weeks ago, he was almost run over by a car because we were watching, and he had to jump out of the way and yelled at the car that was passing that almost hit him and didn't allow him to finish taking his pictures. The gas stations that he cited in East Islip, the Shell station and the other station, those are not gas stations that have a north-south intersection. Those are gas stations that only have access to the South Service Road. So therefore, I think that comparison should not be allowed at all. Thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it. I just have to say, in the best interest of our community, we would like to see this property developed. But it should be developed in a way that is not going to make a bad situation worse. I don't see any comments about contact with the police department or the fire department to how many accidents they respond to on a daily, weekly, monthly basis at the Comac Road/Sunrise Highway intersection, whether it be the North Service Road or the South Service Road. And those are the questions I would like to ask. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Peter Indelicato?
Hello?
Go ahead. You're on.
Yes, I live on Grant Avenue since 1984, and I've seen my share of accidents, just like all the other neighbors. This is a nice community and a nice block. The exit on Comac Road is totally wrong because as the cars come out, it's going to make an immediate right towards Grant, and we'll have more garbage, we'll have more traffic, and we might have a pedestrian fatality. And there was a car accident there today. I didn't see it. I just saw the remnants of it on the road, on Sunrise Highway/South Service Road, when I was making my right on Comac. If you want to develop the property, why not put residential housing there? There's plenty of room for four or five houses. There's a housing shortage on Long Island. Why can't we just put houses there instead of a business? You know, I don't think this should work. It's not good for the community, and it's totally wrong. And I don't think it's a good idea for safety reasons. And coming out of my street on Grant, when I come out in the morning, I have to dodge traffic at 6:00 in the morning when I leave. 6:30 in the morning, I have to dodge traffic on Comac because the cars are coming pretty quickly down the road. Now with a gas station there, they're going to come the other way. I have to look extra careful now. And let's say 6:30 in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, not everybody is really wide awake. So this is an accident on the way to happen. I would hope you reconsider it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. D'Angelo? Peter D'Angelo?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I can appreciate Mr. Selly trying desperately to keep getting this project underway. However, I too have many issues, and I'm sure he knows by now, I'm probably the face of the opposition. I'm happy to say that because I am vehemently opposed to this under any circumstance. Mr. Germano painted a lovely picture. He told us how many people in my community before this particular project. I would like him to reduce those names because I have submitted to this board, and it's in the hands right now of one of your members, and it's a petition in opposition to this project. I have outlined every single reason why we're opposed to this project, going from safety, from property values, which, again, I take exception to that because I have consulted with several real estate agents on Long Island who have said that we would lose up to $10,000 in value in each of our homes should that station be erected through the zoning issue. I, for one, do not want to see that. This is the biggest investment any of us made in our lives, and I don't want to see it go down the toilet, so to speak, over the business aspirations of one individual. I would hope that this town board would take into consideration that there are many things that are negative to this project, including the traffic study, which I would like to know when exactly this was done because that was never made public to us. I'm assuming it was done during the pandemic when there was virtually no traffic. And I have to tell you, I'm a postal worker, and I worked throughout this whole pandemic, and I was driving on those streets, and there was no one on the road during that period of time. So if that was, if it was during that period, as far as I'm concerned, that traffic study was done under false pretenses, and this town is being asked to consider this under false pretenses. So I take exception to that as well. Medians, that's another issue. Do you see how narrow those medians are? Can you imagine a snow plow coming down our street onto Comac Road, being able to get through that little area with that brick facade on there, either going up Comac Road to Sunrise Highway or coming down onto Grant Avenue off of Sunrise Highway? Those are going to be issues, and no one could do anything about that unless they're not there, and that project doesn't get underway. Also, I've also noticed that, well, the comparison of the two gas stations is another issue, which Bridget Anderson has also mentioned. But I'm really more concerned about when the traffic study was undertaken. I'd like to know the dates, the time, the circumstances, because that was not made public to us. And Mr. Germano, I would like you to present me with the names of those people that you say were in favor of this project because many of those names are on my petition in opposition to this project. So, sir, either you're trying to snow me, or somebody's not being completely honest. And I don't appreciate that under any circumstances. So I would hope that this board would consider that the community issues and the traffic issues and the accidents that happen there, and Mr. Freeland, you too outlined at the beginning of this whole process, you had issues as well because I know you said you traveled down that road very frequently. And I remember that. And I live on Grant Avenue, and like Mr. Indelicato, on a daily basis, we see accidents. We see a lot of traffic issues, and those abatements or whatever construction he wants to put up just exacerbate an already dangerous situation. And not to mention the fact that it's a very tight, narrow way. And also, if you look at it, from Comac Road, it's allowing a left being made onto, into the gas station as all of us are coming off of Sunrise Service Road onto Grant Avenue, an accident waiting to happen. Right on that, right on the intersection, you create another traffic issue, and you cannot mitigate that with this project, only exacerbating it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Angelo. I'm going to go to George Dale.
Am I on?
You're on. Go right ahead.
All right. First, I'd like to say that the stoplight on the corner of, at the intersection of Comac and the Service Road is kind of like an indicator or a warning sign for cars to speed up to get through that intersection. Any car making a left-hand turn into the service station could be facing somebody flying through the intersection. Next thing is a mountable curb. I'm not quite sure what that is. Now, is that something a car can go over? And if it is, what does it stop? What does that prevent from cars from making a left-hand turn out of the Comac Avenue exit? Also, on the Comac Avenue exit, both Comac and Grant Avenue are truck-restricted roads. The signage would be after you make the turn. So any truck that makes that turn has no choice but to go down the truck-restricted road. So at the moment, those are my concerns. Thank you.
Wait, I have a question.
One more?
Is the sidewalk still going to be there? I'm Kathy Dale, George's wife, and there's a sidewalk existing around that property now. Is that going to remain? That's it. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Frank Gotta?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, my name's Frank Gotta. I live two parcels down on Wallace Street. I can physically see the existing business from my living room window. Just a quick background, I'm a contractor and a builder myself. I have extensive knowledge. I'm reading blueprints, which the person, John, showed me all the blueprints, so I do have a vast knowledge of understanding of exactly what I'm looking at. Also, I bought my childhood home in my 20s for my parents. I've lived here for 42 years, my entire life. I drive this intersection every single day of my life. So please bear with me and just hear me out. I'll try to keep it within the three minutes. First off, the residents are talking about property value. Every single day when I come home, just as today, I look at a closed-up business for many years that John tried to clean it up, but you could still see the graffiti on it. Without a doubt, that's Without a doubt, that's bringing down my property value. Okay, if I was to sell my house tomorrow and have an open house, everybody I came over, that's the first thing they're going to see, a shuttered up business. So I welcome a new business, especially an upkept, clean business, which he told me he actually owns the Valero in West Patro on the corner of Hospital Road and Sunrise, which, behold, my father and my in-laws live at La Bon Vie, half a block up off of Hospital Road. So I passed that service station many times. It's always clean. It's always kept up, well manicured. The inside is clean. So I have no objection there. I would like to see a nice, clean business as opposed to the shuttered up building that I see now. As opposed to the traffic concerns. What they're proposing, and I could see by moving the entrance back on the Service Road will definitely help considering traffic doesn't back up that much in the turning lane. I'm in the turning lane constantly where the entrance is now. It did create a little bit of an issue with the existing business. Moving back would definitely alleviate that. The line striping that he wants to put in the shoulder underneath the bridge when you're heading south on Comac Road, at least once a day, somebody pulls into that shoulder thinking it's a turning lane and tries to shoot around into traffic to go down to Grant. There's no clear marking that that's not a lane. It's a shoulder. Wait, you turn like everybody else. Putting in that line striping would be a clear indication that that's not a lot, a lane. Right? You can't go there. So that would alleviate that problem. Also, with the triangle-shaped island down by Grant Avenue and bumping that line forward for traffic coming out of Grant, I have to make the left onto Wallace Street every day when I come home from work. Traffic coming down south, they love to fly down that road. They zip around me while I'm trying to wait for the other traffic to clear and it just makes a mess. By having that triangle there and forcing that being a right turn lane, people will have no option but to wait for me to make my turn. Not only that, it's going to slow down traffic so that they're not doing fifty miles an hour down Comac Road. So I totally see that alleviating that problem. People also stressing their concern about the left-hand turning lane going into the business from Comac Road. Everybody that lives here, all my neighbors, when the service shop was open, we all know, everybody pulled into the striped lines to make the left into the business. Nobody paid attention to the fact that you weren't supposed to drive over that. So the fact that there's now a turning lane there is also going to alleviate that problem. Okay, that's another thing. Plus, this man is willing to spend his own money to do a beautification project and redo the entire intersection. Anybody who lives around here knows, no offense to the town of Islip, the last time my block was surfaced was when they put the sewers in when I was five years old. Thirty-seven years ago is the last time my block was resurfaced. Okay? Not blaming anybody here, but let's be realistic. This man's willing to redo this whole intersection and just brighten it up and make it new. I mean, who objects to that? I really don't see anything happening with traffic either because anybody who wants to go into the business, they're going to come off the Service Road and go back onto the Service Road. Nobody's going to make the right into our neighborhood and try to figure out where to go from there. Also, if you're on the main road of Sunrise, by the time you see the Service Road, you already passed the one eleven exit. It's impossible for you to get off to get to that gas station. So you're not going to be really adding any traffic there. And let's be realistic, people of Islip that live right around me, if you want to complain about traffic, look at Party City at Halloween. You can't even get around our streets. So I have
Can I just wrap up? Can you get a chance? Thank you.
I just don't oppose. I am totally in favor of this project for our quality of life. Seriously, I have to look at this thing every day from my window. I am totally for this business. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., is it Mayo? John Mayo?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, John Mayo. I grew up in Islip. I still live in Islip. I pass that intersection several times a week. Looking at a vacant building is as an eyesore is terrible. I think we could use another station there as well as a convenience store. There's no station on the eastbound Service Road all the way back into West Islip, the first one. So uh, I am in favor for a service station and a convenience store. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Cavedo?
Hello?
Go right ahead. You're on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Non-function. Um, yes, I live on Grant Avenue. Um, I appreciate the changes he has done on the plans for this gas station. However, I still have some concerns. My primary concern is um, what guarantees do we have that he will not attempt to change the hours of operation to a twenty-four-hour gas station in the future? Once he gets his approval and his gas station is built, he might change his mind and say, I want to go twenty-four hours and what will be our recourse at that point? Because that was a very big thing for me. I really don't want a twenty-four-hour gas station on my corner since I can see that property from my home. Okay, and it would so it would be bright and it would be noisy all the time. Um, I also have concerns regarding the intersection, the changing of the roadway on the corner of Grant and Comac where it intersects. Um, that is a very dangerous intersection. Um, I'm concerned about these cement um little triangles he's going to put in. I understand the functionality of it and the safety aspects. However, it's narrowing the space and it would make it almost a little bit more difficult to maneuver. Also, as someone else has mentioned, uh, as far as the plows go, if it's too narrow, the plow would have to lift the plow to get through that intersection, which would mean they wouldn't actually plow the intersection. So that, of course, would be a hazard. Um, that's it. That those are my concerns.
Thank, thank you. I have a Melissa Taylor.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
I have some concerns again about the traffic study. Um, I actually spoke at the last meeting. Um, I've been living here for over twenty years and what's really scary is the speeding of cars down the road that I think there's one speed limit sign says thirty, but that's a joke. Did they ever actually measure what's the average speed of cars going down Comac Road to that light? There's a traffic light at Moffitt that has a camera on it that's not even turned on and I watch people actually just go right through it early in the morning. So speed is definitely a factor. I also mentioned how even when I mow my lawn, I had to be very careful and mindful. And one of the questions I'm asking too about the traffic study is the, do they actually um find out how many times the telephone poles on Comac Road, the south end have been hit? Because I can tell you the one down the street from me has been three times in one year. The uh right two houses over me twice, at least twice. And then I was lucky enough this August, right after mowing my lawn, a kid who was probably texting and speeding snapped the telephone pole completely off. All right, and that's very scary. If I was right there putting my garbage out, he would have hit me. So speeding is a huge issue. That's always been a problem. A few years ago, there used to be a cop that would sit. That hasn't happened in I don't know how long. So uh, speed is definitely something I'm very concerned with. It's very dangerous. Another um hobby that I took up this year was collecting garbage all over Comac Road. It's so embarrassing to me that I actually just like volunteer like at the highway patrol and pick up garbage all along Comac Road while I'm walking my dog because it's embarrassing and it's disgusting, quite frankly. So I'm sure garbage is going to be more of a factor coming from that convenience store. And one of my last concerns is also homeless people. I see a lot of homeless people around the Speedway that's off of one eleven that they'll just make their their circle loop to the other gas station going back and forth. That's a serious concern and it seems like no one's really patrolling that or dealing with that. Um, so again, I just worry about who's going to be hanging out there, but speed is really definitely an issue. Um, I see all kinds of things on this road, so I'm very concerned about that, about people speeding to get to the gas station, to the convenience store, whatever the case, or leaving it. And that's it. So those are my concerns. I really hope that you respect them and really think about how it impacts our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a Robert Latronica.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Uh, good evening, members. Uh, my name is Robert Latronica. I'm an attorney at the Latronica Law Firm. I'm not speaking uh in my capacity as an attorney, uh, but rather as a person who knows Mr. Sell for over forty years and I'd like to speak to uh to his character. Uh, I have the utmost confidence that this will be a great addition and a benefit to the community. Uh, I do know how much Mr. Sell loves the town of Islip. Uh, he had started convincing me to move out here from Nassau County, my former residence almost twenty years ago and was successful in convincing me to uh move uh to the town um specifically East Islip uh over twelve years ago. He's uh Mr. Sell is a perfectionist. Um, I know how he maintains his home, his cars, his boat uh and businesses that he owns. Uh, it's always in a very clean and and top-notch manner. Um, he runs them in a classy way with good taste. Uh, I feel that the the residents of the community will find this establishment to uh, they'll feel very very welcome there uh and be treated in a very neighborly way. I think this use will be a benefit to the community. And I just want all of you to have the confidence in knowing uh the character and the type of individual that Mr. Sell is and how he will uh run this business. You know, people are talking about garbage in the area and I could assure you, he'd be out there himself, you know, cleaning it up. Uh, with the way he respects his business, his belongings and the town itself. You know, I have the the utmost confidence in him and in maintaining it and making it a, you know, mom and pop type neighborly place. Uh, I travel this intersection on a regular basis. It is an eyesore. It's a, it's an embarrassment. Um, and I know other businesses there um could be a bigger embarrassment, but I know this will be a great addition to the community and I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a Philip Dineen.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the planning board. Uh, my name is Philip Dineen. I live at two ninety Grant Avenue in Islip. I'm a lifelong resident of Islip and I've been living on Grant Avenue for twenty-five, uh twenty-eight years. I have deep ties in the community. I'm a thirty-six-year member of the Islip Fire Department. I'm a former chief and I'm a current fire commissioner in the Islip Fire District. I'm also president of the Board of Education for the Islip School District. I'm speaking to you today because I'm opposed to this gas station uh for many reasons. And this is the first time I saw the site plan tonight. I had a prepared speech that I was writing, so I'm really going to go off off cuff right now. Um, because some of the points that were brought up, I really have a lot of questions now, right now. You know, it's definitely going to affect the quality of life, you know. Um, the reason why it was zone three, this residential in that area was to prevent something like this from coming in. If you look at all the major construction that's going to be going on in that intersection where it is a nightmare already. You know, some of the notes that I met, I wrote down, concrete medium, a hard island. And then, you know, one of the, one of the other previous people spoke, did anyone contact the fire district? I'm not here speaking on behalf of the fire district right now, but I'm going to reach out to my district manager and I'm going to get that information. Because when that emergency apparatus flies up north, you know, from Comac Road to get through that intersection and there's those hard mediums, how are they going to navigate through all that traffic? Also, over my thirty-six years in the Islip Fire Department, I can't tell you how many accidents have been at the intersection of Comac Road and Grant Avenue. Not not even that intersection, the accidents that you have on the express portion of Sunrise Highway, when you have to shut it down and then we have to force the traffic down to the Service Road onto the, all that backs up, sometimes up to Saxon Avenue. Has anyone even thought about that? You know, and it's it's amazing, you know, and and how those cars are going to navigate all these turns. I'm going to also look at the other point that, you know, again, like I said, I'm not going off my prepared speech anymore because some of these notes, some of those houses that were highlighted, and I think Mr. D'Angelo referenced this before about people that were in favor of it. I know for a fact, one of the houses that were highlighted is not in favor of it. So I'd really like to see all those names who are in favor of this. I all agree that may that something needs to be put there. We're all in favor of that, but this project is 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 really out of the scope of where it belongs. Um, I'm totally against it. You know, in my capacity as a fire commissioner and a president of the Board of Education with the school district, I make a lot of decisions that affect the people that live in the town of Islip. And all those decisions that we make benefit everyone. This decision, if this is approved, is only going to benefit select few. When I go to sleep at night and I put my head on my pillow, I go to sleep right away because I know I made the right decision. I'm hoping that you'll think of everything that everyone spoke. I know people have spoken in favor of it. You know, but there's a little bias there and I'm sure maybe they know the person, whatever. I'm not here to take anything away from him. He probably is a great guy. Um, but you know, that's not the point. The point of the matter is it's a quality of life issue. So I hope you'll make the right decision um because it's really going to affect it. Um, you know, I think if everyone on the on the planning board lived in this area or they lived right around here, they would be opposing it as well. Um, thank you for your time and um appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last uh public speaker that was signed up for this evening. I'm going to turn to uh Mr. Colgan to give us a report.
No, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. It's Wendy. Um, Mr. David Bloom would also like to speak.
So why don't we go to Mr. Bloom and then we'll go to Mr. Colgan for a report.
You're muted.
Mr. Bloom, you're on, go ahead. Mr. Bloom?
There he is.
I think we may have lost Mr. Bloom here. All right, I don't see him on anymore. I'm going to go to Mr. Colgan, if Mr. Bloom is available after we get back, let him speak before we go to questions.
I see him on the screen, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I don't see that he has a mic activated though. Oh, here we go. It looks like he's coming on now. Okay, Mr. Bloom, I'm showing that you don't have a mic enabled on your device. This should be something that pops up when you first log in that asks you if you want to enable a microphone. If not, what I'll ask you to do is I'll ask Mr. Colgan to give his report. If you want to log out and log back in, see if that question comes up and I'll allow you to speak right as Mr. Colgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. His application was adjourned from the September fifth, two thousand and nineteen hearing uh to allow the YAP to submit a traffic study for the proposed use. The primary issues raised at that hearing were traffic, noise, and neighborhood character. Our view of the traffic study indicated that the site plan has been revised to push the building and Sunrise Highway Service Road right in, right out, ingress, egress entrance further west. This improves the site circulation in addition to increasing the distance from the intersection, which would improve traffic safety and traffic flow along Sunrise Highway. Uh, this reduces the buffer to the west to approximately twenty feet to accommodate for a gap between the the building and that buffer area. The egress on Comac Road has been modified with a raised island, the mountable curb for snow plowing to preclude northbound lifts out of the site. In addition, there would be a raised concrete island installed within the site at Comac Road just out of the surface road to further reinforce the rights at only reducing the number of pump islands and fueling stations help with the on-site circulation and relocating the driveway as far from the corner as possible is also positive. Town's consulting traffic engineer and town Towns Consulting Traffic Engineer and Towns Division of Traffic Safety concluded that the access points for the site have been optimized for this proposed use. The applicant is also proposing to install a raised protected left-turn median at Grant Avenue before the service road. With regards to noise, the applicant has volunteered the limit of the hours of operation to between five AM and eleven PM. This should help mitigate that concern when the ambient noise from Sunrise Highway would be at its lowest. Lastly, Sunrise Highway is generally where auto-oriented uses are preferred. Business three zoning already exists at that location, and the single-family zoning is generally not an appropriate zone along a major highway. However, variances for setbacks and overall lot area will still be necessary from the zoning board of appeals to move forward, should this application be granted by both the planning board and the town board. Given that this was the first opportunity for the public to view the traffic safety improvements tonight, and that we did hear several comments based on the revised site plan, the staff would recommend that the board reserve decision tonight to further evaluate these comments before bringing this back to the board for some sort of recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Colgan. Mr. Germano, can we speak first to accident data? What information you have, and can we present that? And then, second, if you want to go right into the traffic study, the question in terms of when it was done, if we can answer that as well.
Yes, I'd like to ask Wayne Muller to address those issues. Wayne?
Hey, Wayne Muller, for the record, Robinson and Muller Engineering. Yeah, as indicated in our March sixth, two thousand twenty traffic study, we did collect traffic accident data from the New York State DOT at the intersection of Comac Road and the South Service Road. And what we found was that in the time period from February twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen to February twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, a three-year period, which is the standard, in order for us to analyze the accident data, there were a total of twenty-one accidents at that intersection, translate, translating to approximately seven accidents per year. The bulk of them were rear-end accidents occurring on the service road, probably people not paying attention as the light turned red. So we did address that in our traffic report. As far as when the traffic counts were collected, we collected the traffic counts pre-pandemic in February of two thousand twenty, February twenty-seventh, Thursday, February twenty-seventh, between the hours of seven o'clock in the morning and nine o'clock in the morning, eleven o'clock in the morning and two o'clock in the afternoon, and four o'clock in the afternoon and six o'clock in the evening. And then again, on Saturday, February twenty-ninth, between eleven AM and two, two PM. So the traffic counts were collected during timeframes when the traffic volumes would have been a clip, I'd say, normal within this area.
Thank you. Can, for an intersection of that size or that magnitude, how does that accident data compare to, what does it fall in terms of the amount of accidents compared to similar ones?
Just bear with me one second. The accident rate is, is higher than the statewide average. Meaning statewide average, an average for all those types of, we would call that a three-legged intersection. You've got the three approaches, Comac Road, northbound, southbound, and then the service road going eastbound. That is higher than the statewide average, which is very common for intersections on Long Island. A lot of them are, majority of them are higher than the statewide average. But again, seven accidents per year, if we were to look at the number of accidents per year, is not that many accidents.
Right. Is, is there an average for Long Island that's different than the statewide average that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. Something that was also brought up was, you know, as of right use. I don't know if either for Mr. Germano or maybe Mr. Colgan, just to talk about what as of right now can go in there versus what, what would need approval?
Well, a certain number of uses, right off the top of my head, would include standard retail use, a delicatessen, laundromat could go there, medical office could go there. So those would be probably more intense uses, but a standard office could also go there, personal service establishment could go there. Those are generally the more common business uses you'll see in a business district.
Thank you. Mr. Muller or Mr. Germano, can you speak about, are there any special considerations that go in with there is a school use on that road, on the roads around it, any special considerations that you took into account?
Well, I, I think that some of the special considerations that we took into account were, were reflected on the conceptual roadway improvement plan and on the site plan that we prepared by, by again, by providing those those concrete refuge areas along the service road crosswalks, and also formalizing a crosswalk on the west side of Comac Road to cross Grant. Right now, it's just one big wide expanse of pavement by installing that, that median and putting in the crosswalks, I think we're, we're actually making conditions for pedestrians better than what they are today.
And can you speak a little bit about those special, I'm going to call them the new areas that you're placing on both Comac Road and on the Comac, corner of Comac and Grant, what they are, how they work, how that works with the fire engine needs to pass, or if a plow truck is going by, or some of the comments or concerns that we heard this evening? Can we explain them a little better for people?
I mean, if the fire engine was to pass, again, the, the, the medians that we are proposing to be installed will be mountable curb, meaning the reveal is not as great as it would be if it was a full reveal curb. A full reveal concrete curb is six-inch reveal. I mean, I think we're proposing a three-inch reveal, but the mountable curb is, is mountable, meaning the curb is on an angle, so in an emergency, a vehicle could drive over the median without any impact to the vehicle whatsoever. But again, but it is a curb, and most drivers, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of them will not drive over a mountable curb. Because again, it's, it's a solid concrete barrier, but it's mountable with the intent that if a, a, an emergency vehicle needed to traverse it, they could. The, the, the actual, I guess, the surface of the, the medians will be concrete. We're just showing them as stamped concrete. So it would be like a textured concrete. So the vehicle, if they needed to, they could drive over the median without having a problem.
Thank you. And Mr. Germano, or maybe Mr. Colgan, can you speak about, I mean, whether or not, I don't know if you spoke to DPW or any concerns they raised regarding snow plows and, and the like?
I could address that also.
I guess, Mr. Muller, go ahead.
The lanes, the lanes that we've, we've provided on the plans are wide enough to accommodate snow plows that will not be impeded by the, the installation of the medians. And, and I think if we were to look at the Google Earth or whatever and drove around, and drove around, we would see medians all over the place, and the, the bulk of them are, are mountable. I think there was some discussion presented regarding speeding on Comac Road. We did not perform a speed study on Comac Road. Speeding on the area roadways is really, you know, that's, that's something for enforcement by the police department, not necessarily anything that would have to do with the, the development of this property would not impact the speeding on the road. The one woman, if I could, Melissa Taylor, had indicated that there are cameras installed at the intersection, Comac Road and Moffett. Took a look at Google Earth. What those cameras are is, it's, it's a form of detection for the traffic signal, meaning that the, the traffic signal, the vehicles that approach the traffic signal in order to make the various different approaches go red, yellow, and green are detected by the video cameras that are located on the master on pole, rather than having loop sensors installed in the pavement. So those, those cameras probably are turned on, but they, they really don't have anything to do with speeding. It's more to do with the function of the, of the traffic signal. And I did not take any inventory of the snapping of any utility poles in and around the area surrounding the site. But I would like to agree with Mr. Frank Gata, who indicated during his testimony that the installation of the improvements that are being offered by the applicant will, will improve traffic conditions. And again, by, by eliminating a large expanse of pavement, specifically in the southbound direction, and actually formalizing the way that traffic will work within this, the intersection of Comac and Grant and Wallace, I think is going to be a significant improvement, and will tend to reduce the amount of traffic accidents within this area by formalizing the intersection as we've shown on the plans.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Can somebody, Mr. Germano, speak about, there's a question regarding the sidewalk around the property. Will that anyway be changed or improved, removed?
As indicated on the plans, the sidewalk will remain.
Thank you. One of the questions I got, Mr. Germano, related to the gas stations that we used as a comparison, whether or not they were valid comparatives for gas stations, for some, whether or not they were similar.
Yeah, as far, yes, they are, and the, the Shell Station, you want to address that?
Sure.
Mr. Lynch will address that.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi again, it's Michael Lynch. Yeah, the nearest, I focused really on the South Service Road. The nearest station that's most similar to this is the Shell, which is two miles to the east, the corner of Washington. It has a lot of similarities to this. Granted, it's not the corner access is not the same as Comac Road, but it's, it's, it still has corner access, and it's a similar-sized parcel. It's B three, it's a four pump, I, I, canopied island, a lot of similarities, very similar neighborhood to the south. And again, it doesn't have the existing conditions that this has with respect to, you know, the traffic up and down Comac Road, but nonetheless, there's a four-pump station that's open twenty-four hours, very similar size overall, very similar neighborhood immediately to the south, and there was no impact from what I could see in comparing to a similar neighborhood away from this type of an operation.
Is the difference is there's no, the only entrance is, there's no entrance on the north-south road on that?
It's on the South Service Road.
The entrance and exit to the gas station itself, is it just on the service road only?
No, no, there's access on, on Washington as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If we maybe talk a little bit about garbage pickup landscaping and how that would work with your client? And then also, maybe there's a question or concern about homeless people on the property about loitering, camera security, what would be in place?
Yeah, all right. We, we've received covenants and restrictions which address the loitering, the cameras, which will all be in place. There'll be no loitering. There'll be security cameras in place. And certainly during the hours of operation, there'll be nobody there. There'll be some lighting when it's closed. But every effort will be made to prevent loitering. It's not something that my client would want to see on his property, and he doesn't permit that on any other, other properties that he operates. And I said that there will be a covenant with regard to that. While I'm on the covenants, the hours of operation, five to eleven PM, I think this was Mary Clavo, Veto, that is also part of the covenants, and those operate, those hours can't be changed. The town is in control of that.
Thank you, Mr. Germano, for checking one off my list for me.
Okay.
And in terms of the, as you mentioned, the loitering, the covenant has, reserves responsibility to the planning board to determine if the applicant or the owner is in compliance with the no-loitering provision.
That's, that's correct. And also, I just want to point out that Mr. Sell operates all of his facilities. Yeah, he's the owner-operator of everything that he operate, that he has, and he lives in the town. And he is as concerned with anyone with the, how his facility looks. It will be superior landscaping throughout and kept in a neat, clean condition. And I just pointed out, I wanted to point out that, I think I have this up here, in the area here that is owned by state DOT, Mr. Sell still maintains the license agreement with the state, which permits him to beautify this area. So we can put this whole, and, yeah, o- over here. And so he will maintain that, and that will be beautified. This property down here, and this curb is owned by the town, and of course, he would agree to do something there, too, if that was permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Germano. Just one thing I want to ask, Mr. Colgan, there's questions about the letters of support. I know they're in the public file. They are, if somebody can come in and request or fill out a free information request to get the letters that are in the file?
They can fill out a free informational quest with the town clerk's office that gets routed to the town attorney's office, and Ms. Han of that office would contact that constituent to discuss that further.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to my fellow board members to ask questions while I go through my list here to make sure I didn't forget anything. Questions from the board?
The chairman?
Mr. Frugari?
My initial concern when I first looked at the site plan was the vehicles exiting the Comac Road entrance and exit and attempting to make that left-hand turn to go north on, on, on Comac Road. But after looking at the improvements that, that are being submitted, I mean, I see clear improvements on Sunrise Highway. The, the right-in, right-out has been moved further away from the intersection, and there's plenty of other circumstances like this along the Sunrise Highway Service Road, and it seems to work very fine. The concern that I have here is introducing a new left-hand movement into the site off Comac Road, especially so close to the intersection with the, the service road. I can envision someone trying to beat the red light, making that turn, and as soon as they, they're making the turn, there's someone, you know, in the roadway trying to enter the site, or someone flying southbound on Comac Road and to beat the light and coming across and, and, and a conflict with that car making the turning movement into the site. Can Mr. Muller, you know, address that point?
Wayne?
Sorry. Yeah, we did consider that, and I think that you're, you're absolutely right. You, you point out a, a situation that, that, you know, could be problematic. But I think one of the things that we looked at was, again, by, by providing that crosshatching on the north side of the service road, we, we're now going to force all the cars that are coming, say, southbound on Comac Road to be in, in one dedicated lane. And again, we're going to enhance the pavement markings for the, the turn onto Grand Avenue by providing another arrow and another couple of skip lines in order to, again, try to formalize the intersection so when, in, in the southbound direction, when cars are traveling on Comac Road, they'll have a clear path to go. There won't be this very wide expanse of pavement. It is our intention to have no landscaping that would impede anyone's sight distance on the corner of Comac Road and the South Service Road, the southwest corner. So while there will be landscaping there, it, it really should be grass, so that somebody who's waiting to make a left into the site has clear vision of all the cars that are moving throughout the intersection. That's, that's, that's what we've tried to accomplish by allowing the left turn in. Again, when the, when the traffic is stopped on the service road, vehicles have to stop and then make a right turn on red in order to come back onto Comac Road. So I think we've done everything that we can do in order to make it as safe as possible. But again, I think by keeping the landscaping in that area on the, in, within the state right of way, essentially grass, and maybe putting some of the, the larger plantings further into the subject property would allow vehicles that are waiting to make that left into the site have clear vision of any and all vehicles that are moving throughout the intersection.
Okay, thank you. I, I just think introducing a new turning movement into an already congested and problematic intersection creates issues for this application.
Mr. Germano, any reservations about not having a left turn into that, into that shopping center from Comac Road?
I mean, I think they'll, I mean, I think Wayne has explained, you know, what we've, the applicant has done in order to accommodate that left turn. And we have vetted this with the trans, towns traffic consultant and traffic safety, and they've agreed with the improvements that we've made. It actually makes it, like Wayne said, better, a better intersection than what currently exists now, which is more like a free-for-all.
Thank you. I'll take that as a note. Thank you. I'll take that as a note to my uh, answer to my question. Further questions from the board? Mr. Bruno, or Mr. Frugari, you finished?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say first, that was interesting because I have to agree with Mr. Frugari, except that, with the one exception, I was sitting here thinking the same thing until that one neighbor started to speak about the fact that everybody's making that turn anyhow. So I, I'm kind of on the fence on this because I think to myself, yeah, it might be a little more dangerous, but at least we're trying to accommodating what these people are doing anyhow illegally. So it's, for me, I, I kind of feel the same way as Mr. Frugari, but I don't think we're introducing a new left turn. I think we're just accommodating one that's already there. Uh, as a question for Mr. Germano, uh, you talked about Bonaparte Avenue and you said it's not over and it's not going anywhere. Uh, I keep looking down at this and you've got a lot, there's a lot of uh, nice vegetation that exists there now. Right, exactly. And, and obviously the neighbor to the south has decided this is a wonderful piece to use also. Uh, so my question is, is there any possibility of, of formalizing an abandonment of this, uh, so that that neighbor would in fact be legally using what they're obviously illegally using? And your client would have control over the vegetation and would be able to preserve that as part of the buffer, thus increasing their, what would become then their onsite buffer?
Okay, yes. I have the screen up now that shows what you're talking about. Uh, this is Bonaparte Avenue here, you can see my little cursor.
Right.
Yeah, that doesn't, that ends here at the town property. Uh, yes, the applicant would definitely consider an application jointly with the ne- the neighbor to abandon this section of Bonaparte, in which case the neighbor would legally be entitled to do what he's doing and the vegetation that exists to the, uh, to just to the south of, um, uh, the twenty three hundred would remain. Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about, so thank you.
Possibly, definite possibility.
Thank you. Further questions from the board? I only see two of you on my screen, so if you want to uh,
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown?
First of all, I, the, the, the intersection reminds me of um, Broadway Avenue in Saville when we did the assisted living and the work that we did there. Uh, we didn't have the raised curbs. It was done with paint, but the situation changed drastically after we reconfigured the intersection. And I think this here is going to do the same. Um, and I especially liked that they put the little medium on Grant Avenue. And uh, I, I really do think that that's a major improvement. I do appreciate the fact that they have um, cut back on the project and increased the buffers. And this is a business piece of property on Sunrise Highway and I think it's a less intense of use than what we'd wind up with if we look for something else. So I think the improvements, we, we, we still have a little bit of research to do, but I think the improvements that they've done is a large step from when we first heard it.
Thank you. Further questions from the board? I am not seeing anyone or hearing anyone, I say, because I can't see you all, but uh, anything further from the applicant, Mr. Germano?
No, I think that concludes our uh, our presentation.
Thank you.
So we're letting us present it.
Thank you. Yes, I think there were obviously some questions raised this evening that uh, in terms of the intersection itself, the traffic and the accidents, which I think are similar, certainly uh, the applicant has taken a lot of steps to uh, to mitigate that and mitigate some of the concerns that were raised at the first hearing. I think we probably want to go back and best have a planning staff and maybe traffic safety and others review this uh, with the applicant to see if all the issues have been addressed. Um, so our recommendation would be to reserve decision tonight, but I'll defer to my colleagues. That being said, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Frugari.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to close this hearing and reserve decision to address some of the comments that we heard tonight.
Thank you. This is a motion by Mr. Frugari to reserve decision and address some of the comments uh, from this evening. I see Mr. Matamore raising his hand, is that for a second? The thumbs up gives me, it's a second, the second from Mr. Matamore, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, abstentions, uh, we're reserved. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
That was the last, yes, Mr. Brown?
Oh, that was the last item on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing tonight and terminate the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. You beat me to asking for that motion, so there's a motion by Mr. Brown to uh, close tonight's meeting, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Frugari, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, abstentions were adjourned. Thank you all, have a good evening, welcome to October.